Good evening, everybody. On our agenda was a meeting at 4:00, which had to be rescheduled, so we didn't have that meeting. In executive session, we met on a real estate matter and no personnel matter. Next meeting of this -- oh, excuse me. Any visitor or public comment? Please take the podium and address your -- give us your name and your address.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Phil Holmeyne. I live at One Pine Valley Road in Doylestown. I've lived here since 1967, which is probably more than a lot of you have lived. And we've enjoyed the area and still do. But the thing I'm here tonight on, to give you a little background also, just so you know where I'm coming from. I'm a Naval Academy graduate, served our country. I led Antarctic expedition down the South Pole. Down the South Pole, I have fortune to be with two of the five earth scientists we had at the time. That's all. In fact, these five earth scientists went to the south, went to the Akita Accord, where they came up with the air pollution thing. Two thousand NGOs went there. There was only five earth scientists there, several meteorologists. They're very short-term oriented. They don't study earth science. But so anyway, they signed it and they put a sentence in, "We don't know whether the Earth is warming or cooling." What they took that sentence out, but wouldn't remove their signatures as they had requested. The head of the Greenpeace has one of the founders just reported that, yes, all the studies that they've done now on global warming are fiction. They're not true. And there's been a lot of misinformation that I have seen from Antarctica that's not true. Antarctica is 96% of the Earth's ice, and it still does. And those two ships that were trying to prove that the ice was shrinking are stuck in the ice now and it's fall, and the temperatures are dropping 10, 20 degrees each day, and they'll be there till next summer, luckily, if not for a few years. But that's not why I'm here. Why I'm here is we've had a huge winter, as you all know. We were named Tree Town, and now I think half our trees have been damaged dramatically, especially the older ones. All my trees are 50 years old. They live in an acre and a quarter. My neighbor just had a truck there Saturday, last Saturday, at his property. The truck was there for 10 hours and with a crew of three people. That cost a lot of money with all the equipment and shippers and everything else. Now, we have this, only about six townships or seven townships in the whole state have a no-burning law. And let me just go into that. I did a project with Ken DeFay also. He is the chief geologist at Princeton University. We did a gold venture together, but that's another story. Anyway, when a tree limb breaks, any of that foliage comes off, it will decompose. It'll decompose totally within a few years, which, science-wise, is the same as burning. It'll give off in that time the same amount of CO2 mathematically as burning. And there's no difference in pollution between burning in a fireplace, a fire pit, or out in the yard. I use a 55-gallon drum. But anyway, or had used for many years. The public servants is what the township supervisors are supposed to be. In this day and age, we've become more public dictators and telling the people how they should live. I've seen even, well-intentioned a lot of times, but you forget things. I read in our township blurb that, "Oh, you should pick up all the dog poop on your acre," or whatever. Well, because that can pollute streams. No, not true. The circle, the green circle you see next spring of green is from the decompos. That's the total effect of that dog poop. In fact, and it totally, in 90 days or so, has no, the composition's totally changed inside that from all sorts of factors of being eaten by different small insects and whatnot. But the point is, we shouldn't pass laws unless they're needed to be passed on burning. This has been a right in this country for ever since we settled it and everywhere in the world. To say that this is a pollution thing, the Congress, when they passed the air pollution laws, said there should be no law passed to inhibit air pollution unless it's detectable, unless you can measure it and define it. We can't do any of that. And the air in this township probably only stays, especially this time of year, not much more than half an hour to an hour. I mean, we live in an ocean of air, not even a grain of sand, and when you look at the huge Earth. Down the South Pole, we have a series of steps. They go down 4,300 years. We could see three great layers. The earliest writing in China was that the volcano exploded and darkened the sun for three years. We could see that. We measured each year of the CO2 content and the different micrometer things in the air and the snow that drips in. And during the Copper Age of over 800, 900 B.C., the CO2 content was 20%, double what it is now. Because in our CO2 content, well, about 7.6%, over 5.5%, 5.6, 5.7, you can't measure it totally, is from volcanoes. So we're trying, in our politician's mind, control the world with 2% solution or something. We can't. It's impossible. Not only that, Russia's building over 30 new coal-fired plants for generating electricity. Almost every month, they're starting them. Now, they're trying to electrify the whole country with coal. So, you know, and also what this has happened the last few years, a lot of people, my neighbors, have piled up wood piles, just of long branches and stuff. And the snake population in town has dramatically doubled, and I've talked to some people about that. And there's been a great increase in snakes, not harmless snakes, most of them, but most people don't like them in their yard. And we don't want to become Snake Town, as we're becoming. So my plea is that we can lift this ban, which seems to me to be unreasonable anyway, at least this spring, so people can get rid of their garbage without spending thousands of dollars. Does anyone have any comments or questions?
I don't believe that we can lift the ban. Dick and Sean, you were on the EAC at the time. When we started working on the ordinance, we were basically dictated through DEP. And anyone in the Philadelphia area in the air containment and the mitigation were required to plan to, you know, reduce burning and everything.
There's only six townships in the whole area and state that have that rule. It's not, you've been fed a lot of misinformation at the same time.
Well, it came through our environmental advisory council, who studied it at the time and recommended the ordinances and the requirements from DEP at the time.
I would suggest you go back and pull the history out and let the board know what you discover, because I recall some of that. I recall John Carson being concerned about neighbors, so I think you ought to find that out and let him know what you discover.
This is a long time ago. I know the ban's been in effect for about 10 years.
At least, yeah.
All right. You know what? Our EAC will take a look at it, okay?
All right.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Lair.
Bill Lair, Parker Hall Road. I just have a couple of comments. The first is, has to do, as I was at the Warrington Township meeting last week, and Mr. Smirconish is now going to do the final phase of the property that he owns right behind where KC Prime and all is. He's going to do the final building back there. Mr. Gunlick was there, made the presentation. A couple of the residents from Warrington had asked about water runoff. And he said, "No, and there's no problem with water runoff. That's already been taken care of." I know when that project was almost completed, I had hired Sam Costanzo from Van Cleef to study that, because we were getting a lot of water runoff to that tributary behind us. So if they're going to start building, maybe this is the time. I think, Mary, you may have been involved in that at the time, but I don't know. We may want to take a look at that. I know we don't have any control with Warrington, but we may want to address that situation, have that retention basin, a second look to see if it is doing what it's supposed to do.
The county one? The county retention. There's a county retention base.
Well, there's a township one, that project that feeds into the county one, and then the county one goes under 611 and disperses in that tributary.
Right. That's the one that caused you trouble.
That's correct.
Yeah. I guess, maybe, Dick, you can talk to the folks down there. I don't know. It's up to you. Is that something you can look at?
You want to get a copy of the plans?
Have Mary look at it.
Just to see if that--
If you make modifications to improve the situation down there, it's well worth trying.
I'll bring it up. The history.
Good. Can I only bring it up because I got this pamphlet from Mr. Hendrick about streams and water coming into streams, so perfect timing to take a look at that. One other final thing, I happened to be over at Land Tech Enterprises last Friday when that fire broke out, and we turned the alarm in. I just want to mention, the alarm was turned in. In like 10 minutes, three fire companies were there. Doylestown was number one, Horsham was number two, and Warrington was number three. And I have to tell you, even though nothing against the other two, Doylestown came, they knew exactly what to do, they started putting the water on that fire within two minutes. I just wanted to have that go on record. They did an excellent job.
We'll let Mr. Cope know. Thank you. Chief Cope, I guess it was. Mary, can you and Dick get together on that one?
Yeah, we'll take a look at it.
Thank you.
Try to get some drawings.
Okay. Boards agree? The board agrees?
Yes.
Thank you. Lee.
My quick question for the evening is, can we, can you update us on the appointment to the Ways and Means Committee? We've had a couple candidates since January.
We will. Supervisors' comments. We'll make the appointments.
That's what I needed to know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you. All right. Next meeting of the board is Tuesday, April 1st, 2014. The D.C., the District of Columbia Cherry Blossom trip is on March 29th. It's $55 a person. Sign up by going to DoylestownRec.com. Red Cross Blood Drive is Friday, the 28th of March, 2:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. here at the Township Activity Center, which is the red building behind. Please schedule at redcrossblood.org. The Central Park Native Plant Demonstration Garden is this Saturday, March 22nd, at Central Park, 8:00 a.m. at the Environmental Education Center. We're looking for plant donations and volunteers to get out, get out information on this event. Visit the website or contact our special project manager, Ashley Thompson, at the Township Building. Potholes, to report a state road, pothole 1-800-FIXROAD. And to report a township road, pothole, call our office, 398-9915. If you need to know if it's a township road or a state road, we have a list on our website. All right. Next item on the agenda is approval for the minutes from, what's, can we do them earliest to, from January 28th, 2014? Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor of the minutes for January 28th?
Aye.
Aye. With one abstention, Sean Tohill. Motion to approve the minutes for February 4th?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm abstaining, and Sarah is rhyming. Motion to approve the minutes for February 18th, 2014?
Move to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm abstaining, and Sarah is rhyming. Motion to approve the minutes for February 18th, 2014?
Move to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
I'm abstaining.
Risk and rhyme are abstaining. All right. So we're done with that bit of business. How about the minutes for today? Do we just do them? No?
We just did them, because you didn't meet on the 4th.
Okay. Thanks. Correspondence from the solicitor. Anything?
I have nothing to report.
Chief?
Just a quick update on the traffic improvements at the intersection of 611 and New Britton and 611, Edison, Pearlone. We have a meeting scheduled with PennDOT representatives, Penoni Associates, and some township staff to meet with them and discuss some of their improvements that they're, they gave us a draft improvements. At this point, it doesn't look like there's any signalization changes. It looks like it'd be stripings and roadway signs. But we're going to meet with them on the 28th at 9:30 here in the Township Building to discuss further and see what they actually have to lay out for us.
I thought the roads were, I mean, the traffic was going to be talking to each other as it approached the, those, you know, the lights change and see--
There's no signals there currently, and they don't anticipate that being part of the improvement.
So that's not going to be--
Yeah, this is specifically at those two intersections, they kind of link in there at, out there, and we'll see what they have.
No signals.
What they're proposing.
Okay. Thanks. Any else?
That's it.
Mario?
Nothing at this time.
Stephanie? In your packet, I gave you some information, minutes from the last chemfab meeting, and they had indicated they wanted to start digging up and removing the contamination that's there on the property that's located in the borough. Initially, the owner of the property was not going to give them permission to excavate. At the last minute, he has, about late last, after the packet went out and everything, he has agreed to grant the excavation, and things will be moving along there hopefully very soon to excavate that soil.
Okay. Can you update us on the Bitser contamination?
Yes. In your packet, you probably saw an article, I guess it was maybe Sunday or Monday's paper, as well, the contamination found in reports from the Bitser property in New Britton Borough that was identified and provided to New Britton Borough. They notified us, and I copied the board on the correspondence that we sent to DEP and asked them to get involved. And I believe New Britton is going to be looking to ask them as well to get involved and help out and study whether or not there is a plume and whether, what the contamination is and what, if any, plume exists in the area. As the board knows, Dick and I have been very successful working with DEP on some previous contaminations in the township, bringing public water to those areas if and when there were contamination in the wells. So we're waiting to see, because it's in New Britton Borough, they have to connect with the DEP, and hopefully they'll do that shortly and get them involved.
Good. Thanks. Okay. Supervisors. Sean?
Thank you. Good evening. Not too much tonight, as one of our Park and Rec meeting was canceled or postponed the next month, either due to weather or lack of a quorum. But we did have a bike and hike meeting this morning, and they discussed, as you know, we've heard before, previous meetings, a lot of big stuff going on this year. So just to touch on the Destination Peace Valley, our Sensory Trail, and the Vashamani Creamway, all moving ahead with those plans. Permits are being pulled together. I think the township, I'm not sure if that's Dick, but I think there's something with the stormwater plan or such for the one. But they're moving ahead, and we'll see all that happening in 2014, hopefully spur additional growth. But anyhow, that's the only thing I have of that. Otherwise, I encourage you guys to come out. It's a great committee. I think we had 18 people this morning at the meeting. So it'd be great if we can have that turn at all of our meetings. But anyhow, thank you. That's all I got.
Thank you. Ken?
Thanks. Regarding the committee appointments, I would like to make a motion that we appoint Ahmad Ebunabi to the Ways and Means Committee and Robert Salinick to the Park and Rec Committee.
Okay. Anyone care to second those?
I'll second. I'll second those appointments.
Okay. Questions, conversations? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. You have something else, Ken?
Yes. Yes, I do. Early on in the year, there was a pension meeting, and we've typically, after I learned about this, that we have two of these meetings a year. And the first one was more of a learning experience for me to see what was happening. But the more I read and through the B-Cart discussion that we had, and we learn about pensions and what's funded and not funded, and what you're, what risk you're at and where you should be, I would like to ask the board if, to have another meeting prior to the second one we have, which would be later on in the year, because we're not fully funded. So I just want to make sure we know what all the risks are, where we're at, where we're going to go, and how we're going to get there, and really have a good plan, well-thought-out plan on how we do that. So I would ask Stephanie to organize a meeting to get the consultants back in here and to, so we can have that discussion.
So our next meeting would be in June.
Right. It'll be the first Tuesday in June.
We can try-- Can we get them in here before that?
We can. Certainly.
I think the concern was, we kind of discussed this after the meeting, the Akita meeting, the lecturer at that meeting indicated that if you weren't like 95% funded, you're in not good shape. And we're at, what, 70%?
We're 80.
80%. And that was rated not good.
And actually--
At that meeting, yes.
At that meeting. However, our consultant--
I know. We know that. Because we're--
Our consultant says one thing--
Because we're--
But we heard another consultant say something else.
So we just want to--
Yeah.
Get some, like, average--
Correct.
Clarification. Yes, exactly. And that might, that could be in letter form, I would think. We don't, do you want to pull these people in? I guess we could pull them in.
I think it would be worthwhile pulling them in.
Pull them in and just not do the June meeting, so you do this earlier.
Right.
And we don't have them come back again, so--
Yeah, maybe we have the meeting in like the April timeframe, and then we get, and then we deem from there if we really need to have a June meeting.
That's a good, that's a good idea. Let's do it that way.
Yep, that's fine.
Okay. Stephanie, you can pull them in earlier.
Yeah.
Maybe have it at 4:00 before the second meeting in April.
You don't have a second meeting in April. It'll be at PSAT.
Oh, it will be at PSAT.
I can do it later in April.
Okay. Well, we'll talk. We'll get it.
Yeah, it's fine to date that we work for everybody.
Okay. Thanks, Ken. Anything else?
Yes. The EAC had--
You only get two, you know that.
Well, I'll take one of Sean's. The EAC had sent out the literature on repairing buffers and how important it is that we protect so many feet, you know, before the waste streams or the creeks and rivers and our ponds. So this is an extremely valuable thing. We're getting positive feedback. We haven't sent it out to everyone yet. We sent it out to a select group in the beginning, but it's, I hope people pick them up and read them, because it's really important that we do a better job of managing those waste streams and stuff.
Do we have them here to pick up?
We have, we have some extras, I believe.
Are there? Okay.
Yeah, I should have them out front. And the meeting room. We do.
The last item, third, I'm sorry. The last item I have is--
I'm counting.
Because of the rough winter we had, if you remember, PICO had held an open house at the New Britton Township Building. And so I went down there to talk to some of the PICO reps that were there. And I was surprised that, one, they really don't know when your power goes out in your house, that it is that phone call that is extremely critical for you to call for them to notify them that you're out. And they're going to alleviate that problem, though, when they replace it with your existing meters with smart meters. And so in that discussion, it led, and I was talking to some neighbors, and it led to a lot of, a lot more discussion via email and with Stephanie and with Ted Duran or PICO rep, that there are some concerns about smart meters. And if you go on the Internet and really study these things, it talks about some cities and counties have banned them, some have started fires. And so it just raised a lot of questions. So as a result of that, we're going to have a meeting tomorrow with a couple, the two residents and whoever else can make it, and our PICO rep, to really try to put this to bed, to really make sure we're getting the right information to the residents to make sure that these things are safe, they're secure. And if they're not, we'll find that out, too, hopefully. So we're having that tomorrow at 9:00.
Thanks. Good job. Here.
Here.
Anything else?
No.
Excellent. Thank you. Rick?
I also have three things, so I'm hoping Ryan will concede one.
I'll give you a couple mine.
At the Planning Commission, we reviewed two plans. Both of them are talked about tonight, so there's no point in discussing that right now. The other thing, and Bill Air mentioned about how proud we have in our township, and we always strive to be number one, but it, you know, the difficulties out there, and one of them was potholes this year. And you read about it in the papers, et cetera, et cetera, in an event. It was nice, in the township, we got a letter thanking us for coming out so quick to fill the potholes in their neighborhood. So it's things like that that reinforce us and let us know that we're doing the right thing and to continue along that way. And the third thing is, you may have heard me mention before, PSATs, it's our township supervisor organization statewide. And this month's issue is all about how to be a good supervisor, what steps you should take, what mistakes you can make, et cetera, et cetera. And it was reassuring and nice to see that Barbara Lyons was quoted in there and put in the magazine as someone to instruct new supervisors. So you got a good township going here, and I think we all appreciate, but sometimes we don't mention it. So kudos.
Thank you. I'll put you in to do that.
Oh, I was going to say, I thought--
The Governor's Award?
Yeah, the Governor's--
I haven't finished yet.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
I just, I'll just take one thing, since they stole all mine. We just had a Ways and Means meeting, and, you know, it was nice to see that we had some township residents that came out. So really nice, because certainly our budget is important, and it's important for the residents to understand. I think that the committee is doing a really good job of working towards making things understandable for the residents. So hopefully, down the line here very shortly, you're going to be able to pop on our website and see nice, pretty graphs that are going to represent how we are physically. And Lee, I want to commend you, because I think taking over the chairmanship role, you've been doing a fantastic job. So if we're giving out kudos tonight, I'll give you a kudos, too.
And at PSATs this year, there are 1,450 townships of our size in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and we are number one from the Governor's Award in governmental cooperation and excellence, because we, the idea is to cooperate as much with our local municipalities in achieving the best practices and services for our residents. And we've done that again with the Chafon, New Britton Borough-- From New Britton Township and the county. And the county-- For the Peace Valley Trail. And Doylestown Township for the Peace Valley Trail. So we're going to get that out in Harrisburg, no, Hershey. Actually, no, in Harrisburg. In Harrisburg. In the Rotunda. In the Rotunda. We're going to get that big award. So congratulations again to our staff. I think it's a great, it's a great acknowledgement, and we've done it before, so it's just really cool that we're getting it again. So thank you. And that's all I have, and we're going to go back to the new business, land development. There's a request for an extension that we received tonight from Mr. Murphy on the, which property, the Old Edelman, 360 Old Edelman Pike. Is there a motion to approve the extension, or a request for extension?
I would like to make that motion.
Okay. A second. Thank you.
And I encourage my fellow supervisors to vote for it. I mean, it was to prove it, we had some challenges with this project, and we worked our way through it, and that's part of the reason for the delay, was working out some of the bugs. So, they did, they complied, they worked out the bugs, they just need a little bit more time, so I encourage approval of this.
Okay, calling the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Rick. The Comer Track, preliminary final minor subdivision on the 2931 Turk Road location.
The property is owned by the estate of Wilma Comer, or Comer, whatever it is. It's located at Turk Road and contains an existing non-conforming multifamily dwelling unit. As a result of this subdivision, the multifamily building will take access to Turk Road, and the balance of the site will take access through an easement to Old Pebble Road. The property identifies as Bucks County Tax Partial 9-34-93. The plans before you tonight were prepared by Eric Everhart and Mientis. They were dated June 24, 2013, and were last revised December 6, 2013. Your Planning Commission recommended approval of this as a preliminary as final minor subdivision plan at its meeting on February 24, subject to certain conditions. If you were inclined to follow the recommendation of the Planning Commission, I have a variety of conditions to review with the board, and I have shared those with Kelly McGowan, counselor for the estate, so when you're ready, and I can certainly do that. And if you want to give a brief description, Kelly, of the plan and where the buildings are, that might be helpful to the board. It does regularly attend the Planning Commission meetings.
Sure, absolutely, thanks, Jeff. Kelly McGowan, represent the Wilma Comer Trust, is the property owner. What we have tonight is, as you can see from the plan, a really straightforward subdivision. We're taking an existing 2.4 acre lot that's presently non-conforming in the sense that it has two uses, a single-family dwelling that, as Jeff mentioned, takes access through an easement to Old Pebble Hill Road, and then there's also a multifamily dwelling located at the frontage of Turk Road. We are basically drawing a line down through the middle of the property, creating a lot with the multifamily dwelling that's approximately an acre, just under an acre, and the lot that's going to have the single-family dwelling on it is right around 1.4 acres. We did go to the zoning hearing board, received variance relief, three variances, in order to have the non-conforming lot with respect to lot area for the multifamily dwelling. We also received relief in order to facilitate the lot line in its location, considering an existing accessory structure that's already there, as well as the second lot which doesn't have frontage on Old Pebble Hill Road. As we said, it takes access through that existing easement. No development is proposed, no changes to the site. We discussed with Boucher and James some additional buffering on that new lot line. We also discussed locating some, in response to DEP and Bucks County comments, and alternative onsite sewage system locations in the event that, you know, they're required in the future. But it is private water, private sewer. We looked into public sewer connection. We were told no, so that's not going to happen. But otherwise, unless you have any questions specifically, I think this is a fairly straightforward plan.
Any questions?
No, I just noted a comment that Ms. Judy Stern-Golstein made with regard to impervious versus the woodland and vegetation. Has that been resolved?
Right, that was resolved. What we did is, Micah from Judy's office went out to the site with Bob Irak, walked the site, confirmed that the existing trees do not, you know, count as the woodlands, so we confirmed our calculations and we were good there.
Okay, so that's the only question I had, thank you.
If the board was inclined to approve the plan, it would be compliance, issues would be compliance with the Pickering Courts and Somerson Report dated February 11, 2014, with the understanding, however, that the board will grant the waivers from the subdivision land development ordinance that are noted in Mario's correspondence. Next, continued compliance with the decision rendered by the Doylestown Township Zoning Hearing Board, which decision was rendered on October 22, 2013, and granted the three variances that Kelly just mentioned. One of the specific conditions is the non-conforming apartment use on Lot Number One will not be expanded. Next, compliance with the Pennsylvania Department of Land Protection Letter dated February 11, 2014. Next, compliance with Boucher and James' letter dated February 7, 2014, except Item 3C, since the parking is a non-conforming parking facility. Next, compliance with Bucks County Planning Commission Correspondence dated February 3, 2014. Next, to grab additional right-of-way to the township along Turk Road. Next, receipt of all permits approved, many agencies having jurisdiction, including DEP and the Conservation District. And lastly, complicated payment, all costs incurred by the township, next with the application, including professional services. Do you agree to those conditions, Kelly?
Yes, I do.
All right, we'll entertain a motion to approve the preliminary final minor subdivision on 2931 Turk Road.
How about that motion?
Subject to the, thank you, subject to the conditions enumerated by Mr. Garten, and you will make that motion?
I'll make it.
I'll second. Any questions from the board?
No.
Bearing none, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. Nice to see you.
You too, thank you.
I wasn't too far off, was I, with the time?
I was.
Three minutes.
Go ahead, go eat some dinner. Township bids, the street sweeping is the first one provided for us. You can, everyone has read it, thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and thirty-five dollars, seventy-six cents, or nineteen thousand per sweep. Is there a motion to approve the street sweeping extension for 2014? Oh, actually, it's the same guy who's been doing it, but now we're just giving him an increase based on the CIN or CPI index.
CPI, and he was the one, he was the low bid last year.
And we liked him.
Excellent job.
Okay, is there a motion to approve? Make a motion to approve? Thank you. Second?
Second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
And sign and post bid. I have a little confusion with this one, but I think basically it is a, we're awarding a, or approving the award to Chemcham Supply in the amount of eighteen hundred, two dollars, Custom Products Corporation, amount of one thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars and thirty-four cents, Garden State Highway Products in the amount of eight thousand, four hundred and ninety-three dollars and twenty-four cents, and the U.S. Municipal Supply in the amount of nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars and thirty cents, is that correct?
That needs to be corrected.
It needs to be corrected, okay, thank you.
The signature copy, I've corrected already, but basically, the Garden State Supply was not a bidder this year. That kind of slipped over from me pulling some information out of an old file.
Okay.
We're approving the first two, as mentioned. We're also approving Garden State Highway Products in the amount of nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars and thirty cents.
Okay, all right, so let me reiterate. Chemcham Supply Corporation, the amount of eighteen hundred and two dollars, Custom Products Corporation, in the amount of thirteen hundred and eighty-three dollars and thirty-four cents, and municipal, U.S. Municipal Supply, in the amount of nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars and thirty cents.
Garden State.
Garden State, in the amount of nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars and thirty cents. Got it, thank you. Is there a motion to approve those three bids?
I'll make a motion.
Can I ask a question first?
Sure. There's a motion, is there a second, and then we can go to the question.
I'll second it, go ahead.
Okay. Dick, could you just help me and help the resident understand what this is needed for? I mean, these are replacements from traffic accidents, or new roads, or new developments. I mean, every road now has a sign on it, so what would, where would new signs go?
Well, we're constantly replacing signs. They either get damaged, or the sun glare on them ruins them. And sometimes you end up in other places, like college storms, et cetera.
College storms.
And we try to buy the minimum, but it's a yearly thing. We're constantly doing this.
Okay, that's fine.
There's a motion and a second, any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, the next bid is for Blacktop, the road material, there are a couple of road materials. This one's for Blacktop and for, to Eureka Quarry, low bidder. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
I do have a question.
Please.
Is this an obligation, do we have an obligation to buy this, or is this just a bid? And if you're going to do the paving, this is for your three-mile stretch of road that you're going to pave every year, right?
That's correct.
So, if for some reason you weren't able to do three miles, you were only able to do two, are we obligated to buy this much, or what's our financial obligation to these guys?
That has never been an issue.
Okay.
Our costs go up and down depending on our needs. If, in the end of the season, we haven't spent the money, they cannot chase us.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure.
And the other reason is, is because this is a consortium bid, we're bidding with all the other municipalities in Bucks County, so we're getting a good rate, and it spreads it across all the municipalities.
No, I understood that, I just
But I think that's why they don't worry about whether, we're more concerned about what we're paying when we go to get.
That's, that's fine, thank you.
Ton, tonnage rate.
Yep.
Do we have a motion and a second?
Yes.
You good?
I'm good.
All in favor of the motion for the Blacktop bid?
Aye.
Next is the Stone and Cold Patch bid, which is really near and dear to our hearts right now. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
And all these bids are within what's been allocated in our budget, so we're well within those mummies. And then the next thing from Mr. John is the engineering needs and cost for Central Park. There's, there are obviously three or four more developments going on, the trail, the game grove, the Century Trail, and the athletic fields, trail connections, and parking facilities. So, they need some engineering and some surveying and so on. So, for Central Park and Turk Park, for the site information, for the maps and land development, where they, there's an allocation for, or request for twenty-three thousand dollars for that engineering, and then for wetlands and their boundaries and those geographic necessities, there's an additional ten thousand for Central Park and Turk Park to do those improvements. So, in the end, I think this is all planning, I mean, engineering and geographic work, geologic or geographic work, whatever it is. So, it comes to a total of thirty-three thousand dollars. Is there a motion to approve these engineering needs and costs for Turk and Central Park?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Any questions about this?
Yes.
I know, I'm ready, I am ready.
We need a second.
Berber, we need a second.
Yeah, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Similar to the, to the previous question, all these are within the budget that you, that we have today, and this is, since this is only engineering work, is the balance of the work in this year's budget, or is that planned for next year?
That's, will be planned for next year.
Planned for next year.
And the following year?
Yeah.
You're not going to do all this next year?
Okay, so this is the only thing we're going to see spent this year for these projects?
I think he's going, you're going to be doing some legwork on this.
Yeah, I mean, I've got to get it started because it takes a long time to do the engineering and get the permits, and this is preliminary stuff. I need to get it done before the leaves come out on the trees because we're going to do a flyover, and that takes some photographic pictures of the topo. So, I may come back to you at a later date and say I'd like to move ahead, we're doing pretty good with the engineering.
Right.
But I don't expect to do any work this year.
Okay.
How many years have we left on that Turk Park lease for the county?
We just have an extension. We just got an extension not years ago.
Extension, not two, yeah, it was twenty-five years.
Ten years ago, I think.
Well, we have another lease, about ten or fifteen years.
Fifteen, yeah, it's twenty-five years, so at least, yeah. I'd say fifteen.
Okay. All right. There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, keep going, Dick. Let's go. All right, the next fun thing on our agenda is the consideration of the purchase of the ten-plus acres owned by Delaware Valley College using our open space money. The amount of the purchase is three hundred and twelve dollars, way low.
Twelve thousand.
Three hundred and twelve thousand dollars.
If it was three twelve, I'd be getting my way out.
Three hundred and twelve thousand dollars, way low beneath the, way below the various appraisals we've had for that property. One appraisal was for a build-out purchase, and it could have been a nice development or a horrible development, or just more development on that area of the Parkway and Lower State Road. So, that's where the open space is that we're looking to purchase, is preserved ten acres.
Ten point five acres.
Ten point five acres. So, the board has had this contract, the agreement to purchase has some offsets, the, there's some consideration for releasing the Delaware Valley College on some front road improvements by the farmer's market, so that there's a give and take in this agreement because we're getting, we're getting the property for such a nice piece of change for, you know, a really discounted rate, we're giving them some break on some development, road improvement that may or may not even be necessary at this point in time. So, the board has had the contracts, what the Delaware Valley College has issued it, has authorized it.
They've signed it.
They've signed it.
They've approved it by their trustees.
They've approved it, and it next goes to the county if this board approves the purchase.
Yeah, it's conditioned on the county agreeing to fund the purchase with open space money allocated to the township. I think the only township expenditure besides the due diligence is the two thousand dollars, so for ten point five acres and the need to use it before you lose it, it's a good piece of property, and I think the staff would recommend that the board approve it.
And the open space park board, also, open space, from Land Preservation Board has also recommended that we buy this.
I make a motion, we approve this agreement.
I second. Excellent, any questions? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Yes. Okay, great, thank you. The Hazard Mitigation Plan update.
We've been invited to once again participate with the county in the Hazard Mitigation Plan update. We participated with the other county municipalities in 2011. Lynn Bush has provided a memo as well as the agreement to participate, and it's my recommendation that we once again participate in this planning process. During 2011 and 12, when they were working on this, we participated, Sinclair Salisbury, myself, and former Chief White at the time, as our emergency management coordinator. So, Sinclair and I will once again like to participate with the county and have this Hazard Mitigation Plan.
So, we need a, by the way, we have to participate in this in order to be able to receive and be eligible to receive federal disaster relief funds, so we want to be a part of this. We can do our own, but it'd be a lot more expensive. We were successful in 2011, and this is just doing the same plan, Hazard Mitigation Plan, but we're going to update it to make it consistent with the new regulations and so on. So, we will need a vote to, for the, from the board to participate in the planning of the 2014 Hazard Mitigation Plan update. Is there such a motion?
So, move.
My second.
Any questions?
Nope.
Okay, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Thank you. Chief, were you going to be part of that Trinity from the township, participating?
I would love to.
I thought so, thank you. All right, Eagle Scout proclamation for Zachary Miller, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
One second. I just want to tell the board that Zachary's brother, Tim, did an improvement at the Senior Center when he received his Eagle Scout, that was his project, it was, I'm going to say Bajigwa, I'll quote, but that's not right, is it? He did something, sorry, having it. So, this is, these are brothers, and they have both participated in township meetings that have been in the audience.
Cool.
So, with that, I'm going to call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
And I will go to this Eagle Scout Court of Honor and read the proclamation.
I know, and a lot of the board members were invited.
Yeah, everyone can go. I'm going to go, for sure, so just so you know. 2014 Sounds of Summer Concert Series contracts. Karen has assured me that these contracts are within the same price range as they have been for the last five or six years. She has a bang-up lineup of entertainment for those Wednesdays in the summer, early summer and midsummer. So, we, and these contracts are all funded by donations, grants, volunteer time and dollars. So, with that, I'd like to ask the board to entertain a motion to approve the contracts in the, however many there are, two, four, six, eight, ten, whatever, however many there are, plus the Pyrotechs fireworks on June 29. Is there a motion to approve?
I make a motion, we approve the contracts dated in Karen Sweeney's letter.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so that's the bands, the entertainment, and the fireworks. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Thank you. And then, the Shamani Greenway Trail Share Participation Agreement, this is why we got this award, and the Governor's Excellency is executing this, this participation agreement is going to require approval of the board. With that, I'll ask for a motion.
I make a motion, and we approve it?
And then Shamani Greenway Trail Share Participation Agreement, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. The only thing I would ask that, one, two, three, the fourth whereas, I think, if you don't mind, if you could add the amount of the grant that we're participating in?
Is it under, at the bottom?
I know, but it should be up here because
You want it up there?
Yeah, I want it up there too, if you don't mind. Other than that, with that
I will tell the new Chalfont Borough Manager who prepared this that
Just a recommendation.
Get her on the stick, will you?[1701.12]
Yeah. It's absent, it needs to reflect the amount of that, well, regardless. All right, there's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hopefully that will get corrected. And then, the board has been asked to entertain the proclamation for recognizing on April